Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Special Planning Commission meeting for November 30th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Celeste, could you please call role?
David Brown.
Present.
Dr. Derek Hunt.
Present.
Victor Mendoza.
Here.
Dan Micalinka.
Present.
Cynthia Staley. Rebecca Spears.
Present.
Brian Olgin.
Present.
Partizmo Hibitash.
Present.
Monica Rodriguez.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to also remind everyone, tonight's meeting is being simulcast via TV 15, so please put your cell phones to silence, for sure. All right, we'd like to start off with citizens' communications. Do any citizen wishing to speak to only, to items not listed for a public hearing? And if you wish to speak, please come forward at this time, and we'll try to limit your time to three minutes, please.
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
I would like to speak, and I didn't see the agenda, so I don't know. I'd like to speak to a section of the proposed ordinance. I'm Mark Sloot, I'm with the Victoria County Animal Services Office.
Are you gonna speak on item on the agenda?
I don't know, I did not get the agenda ahead of time.
Yes, I believe he's here for UDO. There will be a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so I can speak then?
Please.
Well, at least now you all know who I am.
No problem, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you.
The public hearing is still open for the open communications?
No.
All right? So no one wants to come up and speak? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and open up development items with public hearings. Ms. Julie?
Good evening. So I'm here to again talk about the Unified Development Ordinance, which has been my life these last six weeks, well, actually, the last two years. So just to give you some, a brief history on our Unified Development Ordinance, it is something that was recommended in our comprehensive plan that we take an overhaul of our development ordinances. We kicked off with a contract with Fries and Nichols, who will be at council on Tuesday, to kind of give a bigger overview. In fall of 2021, they first published a code diagnostic and analysis report, which included some, the public input component of what you, what citizens wanted in March of 2022. Then they went to co-drafting, and we didn't hear much, just their steering committee had some check-ins on what the code should be, but it was not a lot of the public-facing stuff, because code writing is just long and tedious and not fun. And then they delivered the code to us on August 2023. There was a steering committee, which is comprised of Jeff Bocknight, Dwayne Crocker, Jan Scott, which are council members, and then Gellhode was planning commissioner and looked at it from the planning commission side, although she's termed out, Dan Micalinka, and then Brian Riqueto is also a planning commissioner. So I went over this presentation, and I'm not going over the whole thing again tonight, so don't worry, at our workshop and some other meetings, a lot of other meetings, but I wanted to remind everyone that the organization is really a big component of what's changing. We are deleting chapters nine and a half, five, and we actually made a last-minute decision to move 12, which was manufactured housing into this, although we didn't change the rules on it, we just cut it from chapter 12 and pasted it into chapter 21, so that all development-related codes are in one chapter for people to look at. And we didn't really talk about this. There was one public meeting in which, it was back when Paul Paloschek was mayor and Thomas Gush was the city attorney, and we gave a presentation about the structure of our ordinance, the one that we have in place now, and it's not something we've really highlighted, but that ordinance was adopted in 1992, but it was never administered the way that it was written. And because it was never administered the way that it was written, it really doesn't quite jive with state law. The way it's written is that everything has to be per the plat, and because we don't require replats on every activity and make sure that that land use, that that plat is on that plat, means that we really are open to a lot of challenges. And so a big, big component of this is really making sure that the proposed ordinance complies with state law and is enforceable under state law, because that leads to a lot of code enforcement issues when you can't really back it up under state law. And so huge portions of our ordinance didn't change. Parking requirements and, you know, landscaping requirements, there were just little tweaks here and there, and wholesale, they're generally the same thing, just moved over, but because of the authority section and how we're changing it, it follows the authority granted in state law, which is a very big thing. So I'd like to go over some changes since we last met. So actually, this isn't a change, but I think this is, again, I don't think that it's gotten enough attention because it's so huge. On the nonconformity section, the triggers for commercial properties in which they're required to have site plans are changing. So you can do small improvements now without a site plan being required, which then triggers the entire site to come into conformance, and this is very hard for redevelopment of properties or the reuse of properties without significant investment. And so it allows some small investments to get some of these properties going again. And so that's a big relaxation of what our current code says, is when a site plan is triggered. So we had a lot of feedback, a lot of meetings, and I'll kind of go over what those meetings were, but one thing early on is we had some concerns about requiring contractors to carry insurance. Rick Madrid did an amazing job in reaching out to a local real estate agent, shared what some of these costs would be. You know, insurance is, of course, based off a lot of factors, down to your credit score, what kind of business you are, or what type of contractor you are. So like a drywall contractor is going to have a significantly less insurance premium than a roofer because of the nature of the work. But he was able to share that information with the building association, and so we are not proposing any changes. We've actually also gotten a lot of support for this from our, from the commercial contractors that are already carrying general liability insurance, saying, no, this, you're a legitimate contractor, you should be doing this anyway. And so we don't, even though there was feedback on this, we are not proposing that there be any changes on license, insurance requirements. On the Article IV land uses, so there is a distance separation requirement for these uses that are listed, which are generally not compatible next to residential, primarily a lot of auto-related. And then one thing which you'll hear in the public comment is there is a separation requirement for kennels. We did take into account comments that we heard from the animal control and wrote an exception, that the separation requirement does not apply if the use is wholly enclosed within the building. If it's, if there's runs and things outside the building, then the separation, that would trigger the separation requirement, but if the use is wholly enclosed within a building. So we, when we got feedback, we did change it. Another huge change to this use-specific standards, which is the separation from residential uses, is we also wrote in a waiver procedure. So we already have a waiver procedure when a required screening fence is required for commercial against residential, and this is kind of that same concept, that when a use that has to be separated from residential, and all those uses have specific use standards, and the distances vary depending on how compatible they are or not to a use, and so we wrote in a waiver procedure that allows those residential properties to say, to waive the separation requirement. Once that waiver is in place, then it stays into effect until that use is no longer there, so it can't be rescinded by the property owner once it's given. It's given in that use, it has a right to be there. So that is a significant change that we made based off of the feedback we received. Sidewalks was another. We were proposing that sidewalks be at the infrastructure construction, or be installed at the infrastructure construction stage of single-family residential developments. Right now sidewalks are required with the building permit, before you get a CO issued, sidewalk has to be in. And we heard a lot of feedback from developers that that's really, the carrying cost on that is cost prohibitive for them, and it's not the right time with the economy, and so we reverted back to what, how our current practice is. So the ordinance is written the same as the existing practice. Parkland dedication was also something there was a lot of feedback on. We went to council, asked for direction, and their direction was, let's pick that up in the future, in another time. And so the article is still in the proposed draft, that you'll see that the sections applicable to that article are all reserved, so therefore there are no parkland dedication requirements in this ordinance. Did not want to take out the article name, because council did direct us to talk about it in the future, and so I don't want people to think that it's never going to come up again. But with this draft, there are no parkland dedication requirements. So as you know, we've had a lot of meetings, we invited developers and design professionals, we had a planning commission meeting two weeks ago, met with the builders' association, took those concerns to city council and for feedback, in which I've highlighted a lot of the changes. We're asking for a formal recommendation by planning commission tonight, and then the Board of Appeals will be considering a formal recommendation on the National Electric Code. As you know, we're also changing the NEC from 2014 version to 2023 version. So it's scheduled for first reading on Tuesday. There is discussion with council on whether we break the second and third reading out. So I can't tell you, we're still shooting for effective date of January 1st, but we do have a potential, it is on the agenda for, council has a workshop scheduled for December 8th, and it's on the agenda, so we'll have more discussion and direction then as well. If they want to move forward, then it'll be on council for second, third reading on December 19th, with a possible effective date of January 1st, or it might have to wait for a second and third reading for, into January with a just random effective date, which is fine. The first subdivision ordinance was first adopted January 6, 1956, and we know this because we have to follow it for deed approval. So these dates just get memorialized in our office, and we can work with them. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or we can open the public hearing.
Julie, why is there so apparent a hurry to get this done by January 1st?
I wouldn't say that there's a hurry, I mean, that does make it a clean, we have new aerials that were done in January, it does make it a clean effective date, but we, we've been working on this for a very, very long time, and the substantial, most of the ordinance is not changing, and so let's work through the items that need to be worked through, and I think we have, and then move forward. It also does a lot of good. So for example, we have deed approval currently on the books, which is if your lot was in conformance at the time, our first subdivision ordinance was adopted January 6, 1956, and it hasn't changed, then you can get a building permit based off of those deeds. So we go through, you submit all the deeds since before, one before that date, and we match the legal description and make sure that the lot is in the same configuration. We just had an applicant submit that deed approval, and it didn't mean the lot, there was a 1930's deed, and the next deed was in the 60's, and those deed, legal descriptions didn't match. This ordinance has a provision proposed that if you have a lot that meets the dimensional requirements, has water and sewer in front of it, and a public right-of-way in front of it, you have access, then a subdivision plat wouldn't be required, just a survey. So right now, that gentleman that was denied deed approval, the next step is you need to hire a survey or hire someone to prepare a subdivision plat. Under the proposed ordinance, you just need to hire a survey, and that's a cost difference of several thousand dollars. So there's a lot in this ordinance that is actually really helping a lot of folks. So that's what I've been asking everyone, the issues that people are having, let's talk them through, let's fix them, and even if we need to do reserved, because I think that there's, on the day-to-day, it's helping a lot more than it's hurting.
Can you help me with that reserved process? In order to fill in that reserved space with the subject that's being held, what approvals are necessary?
So the ordinance is, is the city ordinance, you have the city charter, and then you have the code of ordinances, and the code of ordinances is organized by chapters, and in those chapters you have sections. So to change an ordinance, it goes through the city council process, you know, city council has a first reading and a public hearing, they pass it, and then they have to have second and third readings, which they will often combine. So to change anything moving forward, whether we're changing this section or any other, you know, how many parking spaces someone has, is required, a certain use is required, any change to the ordinance has to follow that ordinance process. So reserve just basically means that those numbers in the ordinance are reserved for us to write future code, because every ordinance, I mean, you know, the ordinances has to be organized under a section number, and so it just reserves sections to be written in the future. So under the subject, so the way it's written now, there's, you know, there's reserved, there's no rules. You can see, it's written exactly like this, you go to that section, and there's also a section of the code that's saying, means, that says headings aren't code, the code is the section number.
Well, taking this as an example, if you all came up with some language that you liked and wanted to put in place, would that process be publicized?
So yes.
To the builders, for instance, if there are any still in town? And also to this body?
Yes. So the, the code now also says that every text amendment needs to go through planning commission, whereas before, text amendments weren't required to go through, so that would be considered a text amendment, and we would, you know, do all the statutory notification, we would send the emails. I mean, we sent a lot in this process and had a lot of meetings. Now, as far as whether those are picked up and read or noticed, is, you know, but we do all of our, we do always do our best to be transparent, because it's much better to hear everyone's input and objections, concerns before an ordinance is in effect, and then, rather than after the fact, when we have to administer it. So it would follow the ordinance adoption process.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I am thankful for the last meeting and then listening to the builders regarding the sidewalk clause, that was removed for cost efficiency for the builder. So I just commend y'all for listening and adding that to, making that change.
Public testimony.
Well, we're gonna, is there any que, Julie, you have any more, does anybody have any questions to Julie on this? Any of the commissioners? Not Julie, if you're through, I'll go ahead and open up to a public hearing. All right, I'd like to open up a public hearing. Anyone wish to talk on this item, please do so. Speak your name and address, and please try to limit yourself to three minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm here in behalf of Victoria County Animal Services, my name is Mark Sloot. For those that don't know, we're looking at relocating to a building on Profit Street that's been offered to the county for a very substantial savings. What we're asking, and while I appreciate they did change the code to include any structure that is completely inside the building, which is what I'm looking at doing right now, my concern is in the future, should we have to move or relocate animal services to a different facility? I would like a carve-out for animal services to, to not have that 300-foot setback on property lines. When we're looking at animal services, we're not looking at, most of the time, animals aren't out barking all night long or all day long, you know, the facility's generally fairly quiet, but this will limit us in the future to move anywhere else other than the Profit Street building, where I'm currently looking at, you know, housing everything inside. So what we're requesting is just a change to this that would not include us, or Humane Society, or Animal Shelter, or just, or just not Victoria County Animal Services, as we provide 80% of our calls are in the City of Victoria. We're trying to move into the city so we can help better serve the population of the city, and I just, I know I can make it work the way it is right now, but I'd prefer to have that set, so in the future, you know, should I be gone and they need to move or expand, that we're not limited to this 300-foot property separation. That's a huge separation. And so that's, that's my only request, is that we have a carve-out for Victoria County Animal Services added.
Just have to add a railroad track, right?
If I can get them to put another track in, you know? But it's similar to the railroad track carve-out, you know, something similar to that. Obviously, we want to be good neighbors, I don't want to move into the middle of a, you know, blossoming neighborhood and start having dogs barking everywhere, but we do want to try to be more centrally located, the people we serve the most.
Asking Julie a question. Julie, wasn't there something that I read in this ordinance that exempted governmental entities?
No, generally, we, especially the city, try and follow all of our own rules, and if you remember, we actually required assigned variance for the new public safety headquarters a couple planning commission meetings ago. So it's always the goal that, to hold ourselves to the same standards that we hold others' to.
In Chapter 4, we were identified differently than a, than a for-profit business. We were, we were listed as separate, so we didn't have the same setbacks.
But, Ms. President, so basically, and I'm trying to see, are you asking if there would be some type of carve-out for dealing with exemption status for certain entities or organizations such as itself?
Yes, sir.
If that's what you're asking? And how would that work if that was to even be entertained, Ms. Julie?
So it'd be really easy to write, that, you know, the exception right now is the exception if it's wholly enclosed within a building, you would just add, or if you're Victoria County Animal. I wouldn't, I would try and narrow, make it as narrow as possible, because the use is still the same. You still potentially have dogs next to residences outside. So right now, there's an exemption if you're wholly inside a building, but that's what, if you were to add that exemption, then they would be able to put runs or kennels outside of the building, next to residences.
Could, if I'm not mistaken, I just seen something here, y'all added a waiver to the?
Yes.
And with that, now, that's not cutting you out, you know, if the, if the county, you have your homeowners, they go ahead and submit to the homeowners in the distance, so really you have an out there, you don't really need to have, I mean, I mean, you know, if, if.
The other option.
So they move, they move their building, and it's going to be close to, they'll go ahead, if they can get the people to sign the waiver that lets them build that facility, then it's a, so there's something in the UDO that allows this to happen, and it's not really cutting them, cutting the county out yet. Now, let's say that they can do, is there any?
So there's also other possible things the planning commission could consider. So the 300 feet came from our consultants, Fries and Nichols, as a best practice, but there is an existing chapter on animal controls that requires 100-foot separation, that the county was very involved in drafting a few years ago, so you could maybe reduce that 100 foot, which would still have the requirement that they have to be 100 feet away, and, but then the way, the amount of waivers would be probably less, because it's a smaller distance, so that's something else that they could consider, y'all could consider. Or if you want to leave the ordinance the same, then there's also a variance route for you to consider, adjust this one specific property or use. So those are all options that the planning commission can consider.
I like the standard and how you have it now, and maybe, and maybe the attorneys can answer this, because I believe when you start to get more kind of specific in certain organizations and things, it can kind of open up more of an issue with other, those that might feel that they should deserve it, deserve it too. And so I think with having the variances or the waivers there, I think it gives everybody an opportunity to kind of plead of why they believe they should be exempt from the 300 feet. That's my opinion, but I don't know. I don't even know if that was a form of a question, but.
It's discussion.
You said that your plan to stay inside the building and not have kennels outside?
Correct. Yeah, the only, the only thing we would, you know, look at maybe in the future is some outside meet-and-greet areas, but there would never be, you know, it's in the, what they've written now is that any outside kennels have to be, have an attendant there 24 hours a day. So if we, if we were to have something outside that would be attended, and it would only be momentarily, you know, for public access to meet a dog or something, but I have no intention of housing dogs outside, just because of the proximity to the, to the residents around it. But, and again, I'm asking for the future, too, that we make it as, as undifficult as possible, because we never know how things are going to change. You know, the old days of having the dog, stray dogs out by the water plant or by the sewage treatment plant is gone, we need to have them where the people can better be served, so that's our whole goal in moving, so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
I'm not familiar with that particular, but is that how it was written, dealing with the, with the gentleman spoke on, by the attendants of?
Yeah, so it's more, that's more of an enforcement. I mean, if you're taking a dog on a walk, you know, that'd be like an incidental subordinate use, but if you're actually having a, like, permanent structure of fenced-in yard for the dogs to go loose, then we would consider that an outside activity and not allow it. But if, if you're taking a dog on a walk, you know, that's, we wouldn't consider that an outside kennel part of the use, and then, of course, the enforcement side is also, you have to document all of those outside uses to be able to say that there's a violation, and we would never, probably adequately, be able to build a case on every worker taking a dog on a walk. So that's, that's kind of how that interpretation and how land use regulations work.
We're still in a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to talk on this subject, please do so? And if not, I'm gonna go ahead and close it. So if no one wants to talk anymore, we're gonna close the public hearing and open it up for our discussion amongst ourselves, and any more questions? Again, I, what I'm, you know, we have a waiver, so, I mean, it's, that's where I'm standing on it. I mean, it's in there, we have it, if we need to, if we can, if they can get the approval down the road, you know? And that's, then they also, we still, also has an opportunity, like, we have the opportunity to do the variance routes, which will come to us anyway.
Yes, it'll come back to us.
So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just opening it up to the group.
I agree.
Do I have any motions or any further discussion on this?
I agree with your recommendation and Dr. Hunt's as well, specifically because he's mentioned that it's for the future, it's not an immediate need, so let's not curve it out and, you know, put their organization in specifically like someone mentioned, but instead let our other two options work, which is the variance and the waivers, until they possibly need it.
Okay. Go ahead. I was gonna say, Mr. President, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation that we go ahead and adopt the Unified Development Ordinance.
I have a motion on the table to adopt the recommendation for the Unified Development Ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Victor Mendoza. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. We adopt the recommendation for the Unified Development Ordinance. All right?
Julie, it's a well-written document, that was, that was, I won't say it's a pleasure to read it.
278 pages.
I'm really, really.
It was really tedious, but learned a lot.
I'm really excited for the things that it can do. For the example I just gave you of the gentleman that was denied deed approval, and we don't have to tell him, you need to go spend several thousand dollars on a plat, that's, that's gonna make our job so much easier. It's very hard to sometimes kill dreams with the development cost, and I think that there's a lot of relaxation in this that I'm very happy to see.
I think what's important to know is that's, you can, there's other, you know, there always, there is other avenues that we can go through, you know, so that's a good thing. Okay, the next on the agenda is the consent agenda, we have one item to approve, and it's the minutes for October 18th. Any motions or actions on this agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the table by Mr. Victor Mendoza to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Monica. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, minute, consent agenda passes. Next item's monthly development report.
Good afternoon. So for the month of August, the City of Victoria has processed 139 building permits in 2023, and that's just about the same that we processed in 2022. For M E P permits, we've processed 158, and for permit fees collected, we've collected five, $53,536 in permit fees. So for this, for as of last month, we've had one minor plat submission and four site plan submissions for review. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Items from the planning commission, any, any items? Anybody? Again, the only thing I have to say is that it's a lot of work, and I agree, Mr. Brown, it's a lot of work they put into, it's been on the table for many, a couple of years, three or four years, and, and I tell you, you know, I see it happening all the time, and it happens even in your normal work, you know, you put all this effort in, and then at the end, you got, oh, man, I think we did everything, and then, well, I didn't get to see it, or, you know, so, and it's tough, and I, the, the, the planning team at, at the Victoria did an awesome job, and I think that, you know, they, they worked through the problems and to, to get to where they're at, so that's, that's, I applaud on, I applaud y'all, I really do, it's awesome. That's what I have to say. And I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. And if there's any, no other, no other items on the, on the, from the planning commissioner, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 5:45.